Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today is August 5th, 2019, and you are in the Rowan County Commission meeting, the first meeting here in August. We appreciate you being here. We hope that you find your time valuable, and so it's our honor to have you here today. It's been the tradition of this board and boards all across the country for lots and lots of years. We do a couple of things. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance. Before we do that, we're going to have our chaplain come forward, and he's going to offer up what's called a solemnizing prayer. That's a legal term, actually, and solemnizing prayer is for the commissioners. It's not for you. It's for us because what we do, we take very seriously. And so we actually just ask for all the wisdom that we can muster as we act on behalf of you, the good people of Rowan County. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We thank for our county commissioner, Lord, who are present today and the work they've done before this meeting today, and we pray you'll continually give them the wisdom as they prepare it already, dear Lord. Thank them and the work they do, and thank you again for Rowan County, Lord. Pray your blessings upon Rowan County, Lord, and those who serve within it, dear Lord. Guide and direct us this day in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Chaplain Taylor for being with us. As always, we appreciate your time. He volunteers his time to be with us every week. So commissioners, we have the agenda before us. A couple of changes I'd like to offer up to the consent agenda. I'd like to pull item AB. A is in apple, B is in boy. And we will add that as a regular agenda item during special recognition as item 2B. And then, let's see. And then the other thing I'd like to do is add, you received from our clerk, an item regarding the girls softball team, and we'll add that as a, as item AD to the consent agenda unless someone would like to add that to the regular agenda. But that would be consent item AD. Everyone know what we're talking about on that? We good with that? Okay. Are there any other changes that need to be made to the agenda? All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve? The agenda is amended?
So moved.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Any opposed? Thanks. All right, we have, we have the minutes for July 1st and July 29th, 2019, been provided for us. We have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Then the amended consent agenda before us, we have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving along. So we have a special recognition today for our good friend, our Board of Elections Director, Nancy Evans. And Nancy, we've got something for you. And I think we'll all walk out and kind of ask you to come join us at the front. I've got some notes that I'm going to bring with me. So commissioners, if we could, Nancy, would you come forward? So if you all don't know, this is Nancy Evans, and she is the director of the Board of Elections here in Rowan County, and she has done a tremendous job for us, and we're really proud of you and the time that you have spent with us and the great job. And I want to give you a little history about behind Nancy and some information. She was hired as a full-time elections deputy in March of 1981. And left her employment with the county in November of 1984. Then she was hired in October of 1987 as an office assistant for the Board of Elections, and then reclassified in 1991 to Part III. And then July of 1992 was appointed as the election services supervisor, which was the elections director going forward from there. July 1st, 2003, Nancy's title was officially changed to that of elections director. Nancy is happily married to a husband named Darryl. We all know Darryl. We've seen him around quite a bit. She has a daughter Kendra, a son-in-law Kelly Standish, has a son Jonathan, and two grandchildren. You're not having fun with that, are you? Age 13, Trinity is age 13, and Holden is age 2. She enjoys time with her family, and she also loves to quilt. We talked about that the other day. I think I gave you an idea, didn't I? She plans to work part-time helping transition to our new director, Brenda, and we're happy that you can follow in her footsteps if that's possible. But she's going to help transition to the new director. I asked her, I said, "So what are your hobbies going to be? What are you going to do?" And she says, "Rest." So I know that she's excited about that. So we have applied, and this doesn't seem like it does enough justice for what you've done, but she's been here, she was hired at age 4. So 27 years later, if you're doing the math, that would make her 31. But in recognition and gratitude for over 35 years of dedicated service, including 27 years as Board of Elections Director for her loyal, trustworthy, and professional service to the elected officials and citizens of Rowan County, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners, this 5th day of August, 2019, I'd like to give all the commissioners an opportunity to say something. For me, I would say, as most of us have only been around a short amount of time relatively, but when you run for the first time, you're scared to death and you just want to stay out of jail mainly, because Board of Elections is, it's a legal issue, and you want to do everything right. And so we feel like a lot of the time, we're your child. And so we spend a lot of time with Board of Elections, and we get a lot of consulting from Nancy, and we've always got great advice, and she gave us great direction, and we've never had a question whether what she was telling us was the right thing to keep us out of trouble. So personally, I'd like to thank you for shepherding us through this process, and over the past five years that you've been involved in the life of office, and I appreciate your friendship and the great job you've done, and the work you have been doing in this office and running all of these elections that you have over the years. So congratulations to you. We're proud of you.
Nancy, I'd like to break. I'm happy not to be in jail. Glad I've been offered to get with my campaign, that I'm, and I know that you've told the new staff, I recognize the folks there that have helped me through all of it. And as far as retirement, I have been there. I wouldn't go back to work if they, even if they think what I thought I would for it. So I hope to truly enjoy your retirement.
Nancy, I'd like to say, if I can be honest, you know, because we've been through the challenges and the difficulties and things, and I walked in this house, it's not time for you to sign up for this. This has happened to be the first day that I've signed up for this paddock. So I appreciate y'all keeping me where I'm placed with the windows, but following and realizing maybe while I was selling, while I was writing, and I really appreciate you doing all that great and enjoying your retirement and enjoying my life.
I told Nancy the other day at her reception that she is the person that keeps me out of trouble, and I think she's the person that keeps all of us out of trouble. Thank you, thank you.
All right, did y'all get pictures? One more? All right, would y'all stand and give her a round of applause? So this, around this time of the year, every year, in the municipality of Woodleaf, or in the, it's not a municipality, but what do we call that?
Crossroads.
Crossroads. In Woodleaf, they have what's called the Woodleaf Tomato Festival. And I don't know if you all saw in our state magazine here recently, there was a big write-up on the Woodleaf Tomato Festival, and that's something really cool. And so we wanted to recognize them, and we're going to offer up a proclamation. Those who are here with the Woodleaf Tomato Festival folks, who is here for that? Would you all come forward? Commissioners, I shouldn't have had us sit back down, but would you mind making the trek again?
Sure.
They have something for us as well.
Usually, they're, they're people that'll be throwing.
Y'all come up here.
I'm sorry y'all didn't get anything.
Yeah, when we.
Roast white bread.
Well, when we show up and bring them a basket of tomatoes, that's usually not a good thing. They're going to throw them at, oh, okay. Hello. There we go. So we wanted to offer up a, come on, Libby. We wanted to offer up a proclamation honoring the Woodleaf Tomato Festival. Whereas North Carolina's agricultural industry is of great importance to the state, including food, fiber, and forestry. It contributes more than $87 billion annually to the state's economy and accounts for 17% of the state's income and employs 17% of the workforce. Whereas there is a rich agricultural history in Rowan County, which results in approximately $76 million in total cash receipts annually. Whereas Rowan County ranks third in the state for tomato production, with an estimated $34 million annually from the harvest of 240 acres of tomatoes. Whereas Unity Presbyterian Church and the Woodleaf Community started the tradition of the Woodleaf Tomato Festival 13 years ago to pay homage to the fruit. Whereas the tomato, Woodleaf Tomato Festival is a time where the community and visitors alike come together with a shared love and appreciation for farmers, farming, and to pay homage to all things tomato. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of August as Tomato Month. Wow. In honor of the Woodleaf Tomato Festival and encourages citizens to attend the festival on August 17th, 2019, and celebrate Rowan County farming at its best. This 5th day of August, 2019, and this is offered up on behalf of the Rowan County Commissioners. We're proud of what you guys do. All hail the tomato, and we're glad that you're here and what you guys do. What's that? Yeah, it's getting heavy. In a hurry. He's saying hurry. So they wanted to bring us this basket. Believe it or not, in bureaucracy, there's problems with us accepting a basket of tomatoes. It's a gift, and we can't do that. So we're going to provide, we're going to give this to the Rowan Helping Ministries, so we won't be getting any of them unfortunately. So, but we do appreciate, yeah, that we know of. So we appreciate you guys bringing this. We'll pass that along. That's a great thing for folks to see. But thank you for what you guys do. We've known all of you all a long time, and it's, we appreciate not only this Tomato Festival, but what it represents, and that's the good farmers and farming in this community. You're a big part of our community, and we appreciate you.
When was the tomato queen being, the contest being held?
Only 17.
Only 17?
Yes.
Great.
This is a sexist thing that has an age limit of what? Five? Oh, okay.
It's five and under.
Five and under.
Little Tommy Toad, Little Mater Sprout, and Little Miss Mater.
All right, if there's anyone here, I'd like to enter someone in Little Miss Mater contest, and see them before you go. So if you'll give these folks a round of applause, that'd be great. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Carolyn, you'll be in charge of this.
All right, we officially need to vote to approve that proclamation, so do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
In a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and the last thing, I did want to mention that as you all, unless you've been living under a rock, our Rowan Little League Girls are on their way up to Oregon again for the fourth time in five years. And so our Little League Girls are competing for another Little League World Series Championship, and that's a great thing, under the leadership of Steve Yang, Coach Yang, and his crew. This picture was sent to me a little while ago. I thought it was pretty neat because they're wearing Rowan Original t-shirts. So they're representing Rowan County in Oregon, and so as they travel, pray for them as they travel, and safe travels, and then we wish them all the best in their competition and hope they can bring home another trophy here. Last thing before we move on to our agenda, I did want to welcome Terrence Jeffries. Terrence is a new reporter with the Salisbury Post. He's, he's brand new here. This will be his first full meeting that he's attending. We've had an opportunity to sit and talk with Terrence. So Josh brought him here, and so we're real excited to have him here. A really nice young man. I've had an opportunity to spend some time with him, so we wish him certainly all the best as he reports on politics and government and things here in Rowan County. So welcome and good luck to you. Okay. All right, do we have any, anyone for public comment? All right, we have no one for public comment. All right, so the first item on our regular agenda, get all this turned over. We're going to have a presentation by Rowan County United Way regarding a community impact model. So come forward. Good to have you here with us today.
Thank you all so much for allowing us to come and chat. The purpose of this presentation is to essentially talk about the business change that we have faced with United Way. Last year, you all know that we completed our 2018 Health and Human Service Community Needs Assessment.
Can I stop you one second?
Of course.
How about just giving us your name?
I'm so sorry.
And so it'll go down in the record since you were new.
Yes, of course. I'm so sorry. My name's Jenny Lee, and I have been with Rowan County United Way since September. I'm their new executive director. And we're not too far from you all, as we've moved right across the street from you. So again, thank you for this opportunity. As I was saying, we completed our 2018 Needs Assessment. Upon the completion of this, we found that the three top areas that Rowan County stated that they are the most crippling issues in our community are that of substance abuse, mental health, and healthy lifestyle behaviors. And I've provided you all with a summary of our needs assessment. It's just a snapshot of the full assessment. You can access the full assessment at our website, but this is a really good synopsis of the findings. And what we found in Rowan County in particular is that for substance abuse, if you look at deaths by opioids, we are actually higher than our surrounding counties, that of Davidson and Gaston County, for example. When you're looking at mental health and those complexities that this community faces, we found that 22% of our residents claim to experience depression or some level of anxiety on a daily basis. These are all very crippling factors which leads to unhealthy lifestyles. And for Rowan County in particular, we found that chronic disease such as hypertension, diabetes, heart-related issues are all very common concerns of our community, even health disparities as well. Our families in our community are having to face difficult decision-making because they can't afford the medications they need, they can't afford food, et cetera. So this is what the needs assessment told us. Now what's United Way doing with this overall data? We have actually switched from our typical funding process, that of, it was a fairly rigorous allocation process where we funded the same agencies on an annual basis. This year, we have now switched over to what we call a community impact model. And we're bringing in this model because it's an evidence-based model that has been quite successful throughout the nation with other United Ways. And what it does is it really puts us at that 50,000-feet level in looking at our community. So we're no longer just a pass-through organization where the donor says, "Here's my contribution. I trust that you all will give it to the right program, and we'll see you again next year." We've pretty much changed our whole mindset in that we want to roll our sleeves up and get dirty with our organizations as well, and serve as that convener and the facilitator. So United Way is not here to say that we are the experts in substance abuse or mental health reform, or even how do we live healthier lifestyles. But what we are saying is that we are now going to take our donors' investments and put them into programming where the experts can have their dollars that they need to run sufficient programs. This model has been a big shift for us as we've been making the change for about the last two years now. This is the first year that we've actually implemented it. So we are right in the midst of an open grant cycle, which is completely new to Rowan County, where any 501(c)(3) entity in the county can come and apply for United Way dollars. So it's no longer a closed process. In addition to that, we are opening up for two-year grant periods, and in the second year, our grantees will receive a 10% reduction. We've asked all of our grants to do three things in order to receive funding. One, directly hit the needs assessment, not indirectly, but your programming, your services must systematically help support substance abuse, mental health, healthy lifestyle behaviors, and we've also added in basic needs. Another thing is that they have to have measurable outcomes. In the past, what our allocations committees has seen is that our folks are really good at numbers, at data in terms of quantitative data, not qualitative data. So we're only really looking through the lens of our agencies and saying, yes, we fed 500 hungry individuals and families. But what else did we do? So that's what we're looking at now. What else did we do into serving those 500 meals? Did we teach any level of sustainability within that home? Did we offer up budget work? Did we offer up healthy cooking classes? Those types of things. So we're not really just triaging needs, but we're looking for those long-term strategies to make sure that folks can be self-sustainable and not rely on supportive services. The last is sustainability of the overall program. As we have gone through the years of constantly funding the same member agencies, we have found that they have relied very heavily on our dollars. Instead of looking outside and saying, who else can support this, or can we match our dollars? And in a way, that could really hurt an agency, and we don't want to bring an organization in, make an investment into a program, and then in two years, our community would be without it. That would be a disservice. So our agencies have to hit those three things. And what we're looking for is sort of the cream-of-the-crop agencies. Who's going to have collaborative efforts? Who's going to think outside the box? Are we going to do capacity building? Are we going to do jumpstart funding for programs? And so I have to say, this has been an exciting change for us, because it seems for so long we've put our blinders up and we've just worked with these agencies. And it's not to say we've not done good work with them, because we've done wonderful initiatives with these groups of folks. But what else can we be doing as your United Way to make sure that we're not just serving agencies, we're serving Rowan County? And so I just wanted to share this sort of funding switch with you all to let you know what we're doing. Again, like I said, this is a two-year grant cycle that we're going into. We don't plan to have strong data to give back to you all in terms of our investments in one year. That's just a realistic view of it. But I would say that in two years, we can come back and start reporting out to you all and saying, "Look, we're moving the needle this much. We were here, and now what we're seeing, for example, is a 20% reduction in relapse because of X, Y, and Z programs that we are funding." I would like to open the floor up for questions, if any of you, any of you all have any.
I'd just like to say that one of the issues that we're having with ruffey homes is the fact that if we receive funding from United Way, we're not allowed to do our own fundraising. Are you, are you going to be changing that policy?
Yes, we are. In fact, what we have done, when I first came on board with United Way, I went to all of our agencies and met the directors, and we talked about what are things that are working well, what things are not working well. And a lot of them said, "You guys have too many restrictions. We have what you're familiar with, a blackout period." So there's sort of a flip side with that. What we've done is we have eliminated the blackout period. They can fundraise. The Girl Scouts, for example, can go out and sell their cookies all throughout our campaign season. What they can't do is go in and do a employee-based giving campaign, which, that's really trademarked to United Way, and that's how we make our money. These blue-collar workers, the folks on the floor, those are the ones that really generate the funds of our campaign dollars. So we want to make sure we raise enough money to be able to allocate it back out. But in terms of their fundraising, as long as they go out and make the request prior to our campaign period, they could have freedom to do whatever they choose. And the flip side of that, that I wanted to share with you is, you know, folks trust United Way with their dollars. And I know that as business owners, whether you're a smaller business or a larger corporate, you get knocked on, your doors get knocked on quite a bit for contributions, whether it's for $250 or $100,000 for a big initiative, you know? So what we want to try to do is help to consolidate that process as well, so folks can still trust the philanthropy within the county.
The only thing I'd like to say is, the three requirements that you have don't fit very well with ruffey homes, because we're dealing mainly with seniors. Most of them aren't on opioids. Most of them, they have a healthy lifestyle already because they're coming to the center. So I just wondered how restrictive that's going to be based on which department that you're requiring that for. In other words, as you were going through that, I'm sitting there thinking, well, we've had these discussions on the Board of Directors meetings about, you know, the requirements. And I'm just wondering if there's going to be some flexibility in there that, so it can kind of weave into that organization, not be so specific throughout, you know, all organizations.
Well, all of our member agencies in particular have been trained and prepped for the last two years in terms of the transition of this new model. And we have actually been having a very hands-on approach in counseling our agencies, member and new agencies, to United Way in terms of how do they build the best application. Staff, our Board of Directors, will not be in charge of reviewing these applications. It's our donors. It's the folks that are speaking to us, saying, "We need more impact in this community with our investment." So these are the people that will be helping to review these grants. Now, one thing that we have done internally is that member agencies, to help make it a smoother transition, is they do get priority this year, this funding cycle. So their grants will be reviewed first, and if they hit those three areas that I spoke to you all about, then they have the right to move forward to the next phase. But again, this whole process, and change is very hard, we know that, it's complicated, but this process is to ensure that we serve all of Rowan County, not just one agency. And I trust that we have really effective leaders. And I trust that we have really effective leaders in this community that will be able to go out and maybe, say an agency doesn't get the full funding that they're accustomed to, that they'll be able to go out and find that, whether it's through grants, foundations, et cetera. So I know that we have some very creative leaders, and I'm very impressed with our member agencies and how they've challenged themselves to get outside of their United Way bubble as well. But again, community impact model is to serve the entire community. And the most crippling issues...
Thank you.
Of course.
Jenny, I'm so glad you were able to come and do this presentation today. You said that the grant cycle is open now, so if you could just give me the beginning and end date.
Sure. So our folks had to pre-qualify, and that ran for about a month. And then, the cycle actually opened up in May, and it closes on August the 16th. Our agencies actually got a two-week extension. Again, that's us trying to work with them and give them a little bit more time and understanding that we had a shorter summer with our school kids, people are trying to get in vacations, et cetera, and to offer additional counsel. So, the next stage will be that their applications will go under review. They will then be scored upon a scoring rubric, and then they will move on to site visits. I want our volunteers to go to each site to make sure we build a whole picture of what this program or their programs look like, because it's really easy to build a great grant and put it on a paper, but oftentimes, it doesn't really connect until you can see it firsthand. So that'll be all going on in the month of September into October. Our campaign also kicks off on September 18th. So these two things are moving together, and then folks will then be notified of their award at the beginning of November. And once our campaign has finalized, on November 15th, they will then be awarded of the full amount that they will receive for the two years.
Thank you. Just for general information, I was able to participate in this process early on, and it was really quite amazing how the community came together and those top three issues just popped right up. You know, substance abuse, opioids, it's a huge, huge problem here, and mental health too, and those two go together.
Hand in hand.
And then, healthy lifestyles. It's kind of like a three-legged stool.
It is. And what we've told folks is that it didn't take us one night to get here. This is a national issue. These are national issues. We do not plan to come back to you all and say, "Look, in one year, we have done some great stuff." Yes, we can say that, but substantial movement takes time. And so, we are prepared to be in this for the long haul. We'll continue to hold needs assessments. We have to do ours, or we've chosen to do ours every six years. So, we'll take a look at that again, once we get closer to the six years. But what I can say is I'm impressed by the whole county coming together and taking a look at these issues, because if folks are not taught life skills, if folks cannot pass a drug test, if folks have any sort of mental health diagnosis, they will not be successful in life. Then we can't field jobs, we can't have a prosperous community that people want to move to or stay in. You know, as a younger person, folks often say, "What got you to come back to Rowan County?" So those are the types of questions that we want to be prepared to answer, and you all know this so very well. But we're working on the efforts to ensure we can help in some small way with your investments as donors, that we can make sure that we help to build a thriving community.
Thanks.
Well Jenny, thank you for coming today. Some time ago, she asked if we could talk one-on-one about the community impact model. And what I got out of that is, you know, really questioning whether the money that's being invested is being invested effectively, if it's being spent effectively. And this is beginning to address that. Is there accountability?
Absolutely.
Maybe duplication going on? And I think the whole community is asking those questions. So frankly, this discussion is really a breath of fresh air, and I think is badly needed. And so, we appreciate, if we call it a shake-up, that's a good thing, it's always a good thing.
Yes.
I'm sure it feels like that.
It feels like an earthquake a little bit sometimes, but that's okay. I'm still able to pull, I'm new to United Way for about a month more.
Well, good. Well, thank you for talking to us about this.
Absolutely.
And for being willing to come in and talk to the community about what the new impact model looks like, and we wish you the best. Thanks for coming in.
Well, thank you all for your time today, and hopefully, in the next few years, we can have conversations about how we've moved that needle a little bit.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, let's see. West Rowan Library Floor Plans and Design, Mr. Jeff. Come on up. I would say Mr. Bill, but only a few people in the room would get that.
Oh, no.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Hall, Library Director, as you know, and here to ask you for your approval of the floor plans and design for the West Rowan Library. Bill Bergen is our architect and here to answer questions for you. And thank you for your time.
Welcome, Bill. I think you've been given a plan. Basically, we have three components to our plan. The library, which is the one that was there, served the school. The auditorium, which we're going to kind of change a little bit, making it a smaller auditorium, but also adding two educational activity classrooms, and a little, kind of a dining area, not a dining area, a little kitchenette area to serve those. And then, they're connected together with a toilet facility and hallway system, so they can be opened either the auditorium or the library, or both at the same time. So, that's really the design. We have had some requests from Cleveland to add some parking spaces, so we had to add a little parking lot back there, which we weren't expecting, but generally speaking, it's gone pretty much the way we expected. And so, we have a bid opening on the 15th, 3:00, so we should have numbers in, and hopefully, we'll be close enough to our budget that you'll keep things moving. So if anybody has any question about the design, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I just want to have you talk about the parking situation a little bit, and what's being required as far as number of spaces by the town of Cleveland.
Yeah, they do, I mean, it is from their ordinance, and so in fairness to them, they didn't ask us for anything they wouldn't ask anybody for. We were just thinking that, given the fact that it was part of a school, and the school's gone, that we would have less parking demand than the school had, so therefore, if they had enough before, they would have enough after. But they actually got a little bit more specific to an individual use, and just ran the numbers. And so, that's why they came up with those extra spaces, is it just became a numbers game. And so, that's what happened. And so, we counted the numbers we had at the park, and up against the building, and along the backside of the auditorium, and then we just said, "We need 28 more," and that's what we did. So I think we have somewhere near 50.
Fifty-two spaces.
Yeah, 52 spaces after we add our 28. So, anyway, we've got that in the plan, so we'll have the number.
Have we been to any city meetings there, or had any kind of input from the community there?
We have, on a couple occasions, been before the city commissioners, I think they called themselves there, and presented what potential floor plan, and how the facility would be used. And recognition of that, they made a $100,000 contribution to the program. We also had, last fall, a community event wherein invited people from the community to come in and discuss what they wanted in the library facility. And that was fairly successful. But that has been the extent of it. Mr. Green?
Well, this facility is going to help not only fulfill a need with the library, but the meeting hall, whatever you want to call that, is certainly needed. I think most of the civic activities and things take place at the Lions Den down there that holds about 50 people or something. And so, my personal opinion is that this is really going to be terrific for the Cleveland community, and I just could not remember about the community input from that side. I'm not trying to put anybody's feet to the fire, I just couldn't remember.
Also, we heard from the fire department that they're going to be shifting people that come to them for meetings to come to our facility instead of that.
We do a lot of public libraries across the state. In fact, we've done like 32s. And we do see the trend for that multipurpose community room, and you actually will have a little bit of an enhanced one because of the size of what we started with. Normally, we would do a community room that'd hold 100 people, and that'd be the end of it, you know, but this one's going to have that and more, and two classrooms, and a place to have a little catering kitchen to set something up. And so, you'll have the opportunity to have diabetes training, and, you know, high blood pressure review. I mean, you'll have some educational opportunities that you wouldn't normally get. So, again, it's going to be a little bit better than normal, if we can pull this off.
I'd like to thank the county staff that helped us acquire a deed for that recently as well.
I heard Commissioner Pierce talking to Jeff before the meeting, and Commissioner Pierce, as he has a talent to do, got right down to the question, and the question was, "Jeff, are you happy with this plan?"
Absolutely.
And Commissioner Pierce said, "Well, I'm good, dude." He said, "I'm good." I made a few words. So, any other questions for Jeff and Bill? If not, do we have a motion to approve the plans for the West Rowan Library?
I'm making a motion, sir.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Shane Stewart, consider approval of SNIA 03-19 for Terramore Construction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this request is a special non-residential intensity allocation, which is just a fancy acronym. In term for, when you're in a watershed area, there are certain impervious limitations you have. There's an option where the applicant can petition the board to take advantage of that 1070 option. So, there's a proposed one-point, just under two-acre lot, and based on its impervious coverage, proposed, it would need this intensity allocation. So you have all the information in your site plan, packet and stuff. You have a rendering, I'll pull up on the screen here. This is, the applicant is proposing a little upgrade to the facade at that location. This is the image you see here, again, in your packet. What did not, we did not have in time to include in the packet, but we have here now, is the facade details. So on the front and the right side, you'll have hardy board and also brick. This is actually two different tones of hardy board, so the lighter, referenced as biscuit. And then, this here to the left, number 11, is the desert sand, I believe. And then, on the rear side, which will be facing another parcel, not going to be facing a road, will be metal. And then, on the other end cap, will also be metal as well. One of the things I did want to point out, of course, since you're seeing this for the first time, you wouldn't have caught it, but I do want, for the record, there's a reference here to a number nine, but this is actually going to be, is that the right one? There's a reference in the document to two different, yeah, here it is, 11 and also nine. Just for clarification, 11 is hardy board, 9 is the brick veneer. There's a reference in the document to metal as well, and it will be only metal on the back of the building and the one end cap. The other will be two versions of hardy board and brick on the base. Any questions about the request and the building details?
Yeah. Shane, how does this differ from the Dollar General that we approved with the first facade requirements? Do you know what?
I mean, just a little different arrangement. I think the other had a slight more brick, more windows, but it's very similar. I mean, in the context of the other stores we've had, so definitely, this is, I don't know, I believe this may have been one of the options that was for that store as well. They had five, and...
Do they have a landscape view for this yet?
No, ma'am, they do not. Mr. Strickland's here, in case the board wants to ask any questions of him.
So if that'll be for two sides, and then you've got metal on two, is that because it's backing up to woods, or?
I mean, you'll see part of the end cap, but, you know, the dominant feature will be along 801. So you'll see that, or, excuse me, Woodley Road, and then 801 as well. So, again, the long extension of the building will be facing, right now, there's a home there they'll be removing, and the owner of this property, Mr. Byerly, will be the owner of that, the balance of that lot, so it will back up to that property. The end cap, you can see some from the road, but it's, again, a side view and not a front view.
And they're coming in off of which road?
We Woodley Road.
What does it look like from 801?
This will be the, what they call the front elevation, right here.
I guess I'm a little concerned, because I thought that we were headed towards some uniformity and upgrading of these buildings. So, I'm just a little disappointed at what we're seeing here.
Well, this is an upgraded monument sign, or are they going with a big?
Pile-on here.
Pile-on? Is that a big deal?
Can I speak?
Yeah, please, yeah, yeah.
Hey, thank you for letting me speak. I'm just Strickland, Terramore Development. I mean, we would take into consideration doing a monument sign if needed, if that would be the hurdle to get across.
Yeah.
I think that's what we proposed there at Rockwell as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And to, you know, to speak on behalf of the neighborhood, I mean, everything to the left of us and behind us is all fields. I think they grow corn in them, or something of that nature. So that's why we didn't really look at doing an upgrade to the landscape plan, because, I mean, we wouldn't be buffering anything there outside of cornfields.
Well, what is the front and side that you do see going to look like?
I don't, have you got the civil drawing on check?
It's in the packet. It's in the packet. I don't have access to it, I didn't bring that on the thumb drive.
But, I mean, we would take into account for whatever you guys would want to throw out there. I mean, I think we've done a little bit of, you know, we went above and beyond there at Rockwell, because we had some residents and some local folks that had some issues with the buffering, and we, you know, the impact we would have, but I mean...
Well, my concern is simply this, that even though you're out in, quote, "the middle of nowhere," there's a tremendous amount...
Wait a minute, let's not, let's not.
Sorry, Jim. No, just because you're out in the country, there's a tremendous amount of traffic on both of those roads. And when we're presenting our local communities to the public, especially people that are visiting, it just seems to me that, at least my desire, would be that we keep with the design... design of what we did in Rockwell, plus upgrade the front and side landscaping. And to see that it's just nothing but grass on a sidewalk, quite frankly, is, like I said, very disappointing.
Okay. I mean, you guys can make, you know, the suggestion that we do match the landscaping detail there at Rockwell, like we did at the front and the side, and not have to do the buffering around the exterior rear two sides? And, you know, we would adhere to that.
I would hope my... Are you familiar with all the construction that's going on at that corner right now?
Absolutely. We've sat in at all the DOT monthly meetings. You know, our drive entrance, you know, was, that was granted, was actually based on the new, the new orientation of the intersection there.
So, how far back will you be from the new entrance?
We, our drive entrance lines up with Parks Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if other commissioners are not familiar with it, that has been, for years, has been a terrible intersection right there. But the DOT has come in and they are making major changes right there to slow up traffic and to make it safer at that particular intersection of eight oh one, Woodleaf Road and Cool Springs Road, which will be the new metropolis of West Rowan before too long, Judy, and not in the middle of nowhere.
Sorry.
They are having the tomato festival there. And we're not sure of any others that are around that eastern part of Rowan or south Rowan that is as good as the tomato festival.
Point taken. And...
Can we go back to, Shane, can we go back to, what do we call it? Yes. So, this front will be on Woodleaf Road, correct?
Eight oh one.
That'll be on eight oh one. And so, on the bottom there, that will be along Woodleaf Road?
Correct.
So, then go down a little further. So, then that will be coming up eight oh one.
Yes. That'll be facing the field.
And then, the back will be metal.
Correct. So, that'll be metal. The left elevation will be metal.
All right.
And then, this is metal.
So, I think my request would be, you know, this is an upgrade from their other buildings. It's, it is, in fact, when we went through this issue with Rockwell, Rockwell provided us with five different options of upgrades, and this was one of those. So, this is a greatly upgraded building. I think, from my standpoint, and to try to bring in what Judy is talking about, I don't mind the back being metal. I'd request the sides match, the two sides match, if you're coming up eight oh one or whatever. Monument sign, and then just to work with Planning Department on some type of landscaping plan. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
Mr. Chairman, I, since the gentleman is willing to go with the design of Rockwell on the building, both and the landscaping, I would hope that we could move that direction rather than what we're seeing here.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure which side we're talking about.
The, so, one side has hardy plank and brick, and the other side has brick and metal. So, the, both sides be hardy plank. If they want to metal up the back, I'm fine with that.
And, again...
The eight oh one side.
Well, there's two eight oh ones.
So, this will be eight oh one fronting the road. And then, the backside, the opposite end of that, will be the rear elevation, which is facing, not facing the road, but it's the opposite side on the Woodleaf Road side.
Right.
And, of course, this spance here is fronting Woodleaf Road, the right side.
So, on the site plan, if you look at the site plan, it's kind of small. Can you go to the site plan?
I don't have that here.
Eight oh one. What is this road?
That's eight oh one.
No, this says eight oh one here. So, that's the frontage.
That's not, there's no...
That's not a road?
No.
Just eight oh one and this would be...
Could you, could you come up here?
It's probably here.
So, this is eight oh one, right? This, these are just the boundaries of the property? This is not a road?
You're making these changes.
Right.
In Woodleaf.
Yeah.
What they got to build?
This is.
Yeah. What I'm asking is that these two match? Yeah, but folks are still coming up eight oh one here and going to see that side.
There's more traffic on eight oh one than there is in Woodleaf.
Yeah. So, could you, could you, could you kind of show then what we're talking about?
So, what was indicated here, this would be the left elevation. That is what's under discussion here for matching the opposite side, which is the right elevation that fronts Woodleaf Road.
Right.
Does that make sense, Joe?
Now, what that is, that's our eve side there. That's the low side of the building, which is where we drain all the water off of it. So, I mean, it wouldn't exactly match the material there on the front that you're wanting, but, I mean, we could enhance it, you know, with the same type materials. As you can see there, there's gutters and downsouts that come down on that side.
I think we're just talking about materials.
Okay.
So, as, if you look at the right side of the building, the right side of the building is upgraded. The left side of the building will clearly be visible coming down eight oh one.
Okay.
So, we're paying a little more respect to folks coming up Woodleaf Road than we are folks coming down eight oh one.
Okay.
So, not to say that the back of the building won't be visible coming up Woodleaf Road as well, but I think we'll concede that the back of these buildings typically are metal.
Okay.
So, if the left and right side, not saying they have to match, but the materials need to be the same, looking for a monument sign and some type of plan for, you know, plants and whatnot, shrubbery. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're good.
Some of it. No, I guess I would just say to the applicant that you've seen how some of our people react to Dollar General. And I think, quite frankly, it would be in your best interest to upgrade to that Rockwell standard and use that as your model for the rest of the county, because I'm assuming that you're going to put more stores up, yes?
Can I speak on behalf of that right quick?
Yeah, sure.
Now, the Rockwell store only has two sides of enhanced exterior elevations.
Yeah.
I think what we did was we buffered and fenced along so you couldn't see that side coming from Rockwell.
Right.
Yeah.
My, my request is that the front would look the same.
Okay.
Because I think that that was seriously much, what's the term I'm looking for, classier than what we're seeing here. And I think that, like I said, for the reputation of your stores around the county, if we're going to be able to work together and have communities be willing to accept it, then to say that, you know, this is the standard, I think, would be really helpful. And, like I said, too, there's so many cars on eight oh one and a lot of mobile visitors. And I think it would put out there a very strong message that we are proud of our community.
Absolutely. See, when we budgeted this thing last year, when it was approved, when we took it to rec, which is where we submitted to real estate for approval, we approved it by what the ordinance allowed, which was a prototypical building like we built at Carson High School. So, that's what we originally budgeted. So, when we came back and realized we had a watershed issue, then we had to scramble at the twelfth hour trying to figure out how to get around it. You know, and truthfully, we could have got around it with buying more dirt, but we didn't want to out you guys on that side of it, so we came back before you humbly, you know, with some concessions here. So, that's what we presented. And we thank you.
Well, we're about done on this, but let me just clear up the record. They were here earlier, which was in first meeting in July.
Yes, sir.
And we spoke briefly in the hallway, and the sense of the commissioners has been that Dollar Generals step up their stores. But when we talked, we found out that this one was going to be just a regular store. And so, I told him that he would likely run into this issue in our last meeting. So, he said, "Let's just pull the item." If you recall, we pulled this item in the January, in the first meeting in July. And he said, "Let me go back and we'll present you with some of the options that were part of the Rockwell discussion." So, they sent those out. I sent those to the commissioners. And so, so this is, you know, this is what came back. And so, they did, they did do an upgrade on, you know, from the original thing. So, all right, any other, any other questions? So, we can work through. So, I'll make a motion that we approve with the upgrades to the, to the three sides, monument sign, and work with Planning Department on your landscape plan, okay?
A second.
A second. Any other discussion, finally? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. All right, Mr. Bogle and Don, now, we're going to talk about the new EMS station in Cleveland. Rockland County's got a lot of construction going on, and that's a good thing. So, Don, thank you for working on this. Pete, thank you for being here. I know you, you're on a timeframe. You got to be in, in what, Montana by seven, was that?
Just Fuquay.
Fuquay, Verena. Okay. It's a little different.
Commissioners, we, again, appreciate you allowing us to be here today. Myself, Chris, Elise and his staff, we've worked with Pete Bogle. We've came up with what we think is a good plan, and we're bringing this for you as far as for review and approval of this. This time, I'll turn it over to Pete.
Good intro, Don. Thank you. I'm Pete Bogle. I'm with the Bogle Firm Architecture. And we were given this, the EMS station in Cleveland. It's also part of the Cleveland Elementary School property to work on. It's a, it was a tight budget project, but we've tried to keep everything under wrap or under, under that budget as best we can, and working with Chris and Lenny and Don as this project has progressed. Is this the right folder, Shane? Oh, Shane left. We'll just find out. Okay. All right. I guess you actually have seen the plans and the elevations. Just go ahead and bring up what we've got here real quickly and so the audience can see as well. So, existing building that, that we were given to start from was originally a shop building, later the kindergarten building, is fairly open and the lower area that's on the plan there, and then the upper portion was divided in some classroom areas. And the way we've approached the project is, the station itself is a fairly minimal station, and we utilize the upper portion. It is, it is a raised elevation, floor elevation in that area. That, that area has plumbing in it that we could reuse some of as we're doing the new station. Station's very simple. It's one office, a day room for the staff, and then the bathrooms and the other pieces that need to go with it, storage for the other meds and the, everything they need for that. And then, behind the station itself, the new piece is the ambulance garage, and it's a pre-engineered metal building. Nothing fancy there. We've got it set up as a single slope to shed water off toward the back. Entrances on the, what will be the south side of the building, south down on the plans there, and then the ambulance would exit out to the north. And then, this piece that was left over, what was the old lower portion of that building, EMS services have need for storing some, some of their equipment that's on trailers. And so, we're going to set that up for, for trailer storage. And it's just kind of dead storage, minimal heat, just to keep things from freezing in there.
Pete, can you, can you make that a bid alternate?
The work in that portion?
Yes.
As a bid alternate? We potentially could. Most of the work that goes on with that piece, though, has to do with, we're taking the windows out. There's some existing casement frame windows, old steelcase windows that are in pretty poor condition. Those need to be done anyway. And then, the roof that's on top of it, and that needs to be done anyway. Really, from there, the only piece that's, would be alternate, would be maybe lighting and some paint. So, that's really all we're doing in those spaces, and cleaning it up some, which the cleanup needs to happen anyway. So, I can look at it as a bid alternate, but it's not going to really move the needle much.
Okay.
Okay, if you'd like, we can. We have one other bid alternate already set up, so adding a second bid alternate, we can do that. The other bid alternate was one that was requested, if you can follow where I am, the, as you drive out of the, as the ambulances are leaving the garage bay, they turn behind where these cars may be parked. And to avoid any kind of potential issue of somebody backing out of one of those spaces as an ambulance is coming out at the same time, they asked us to do another drive aisle that would come out in this grassed area right now and hit the, hit the road. So, we'll have an alternate price for that, so I can look at both of them.
Now, was the bestest windows already removed?
Yes. Yeah.
The part of the, so you could, I mean, potentially, you could demolish that without the cost of remediation?
Demolish that half of the building?
Yes.
Um, we've got some, we could. And if you would like us to look at what it would cost to demo that half of it, we could do that. My, my guess is that we're going to spend almost as much demoing it, if not as much, than we will just doing the little bit of work on it that we are. But we can look at it that way if you'd like.
Okay. Well, that's up to the board. I just was curious if you could, because it just seems like a lot of...
It could be.
Empty space.
Yeah. And show you quickly from there what the elevations are going to look like. Top elevation that you see on the plan or on the sheet there is what you would see from, from school streets. The approach is, being in the budget we were, was, was to paint all the brick. I'm not a huge fan of painting brick, but we've got a lot of mismatched brick that's been patched over time, plus the windows that we're taking out and filling back in. That's going to give it the nice, clean look that, that we need, instead of having to go back in and re-point all the brick and try to find brick that matched to replace some of the brick that didn't. Painting was the right solution. And from there, just a little bit of signage over the main doors, some lighting. On the, the second drawing down is the, the south end, and you can see where we are adding the two garage doors to come into that storage area and the main door that's between. And then, the, the two garage doors on the right then are the backside of the ambulance bay. And then, the third drawing down is the backside that would actually face toward the new elementary school. And then, the furthest down is the, the north side of the building, which would be where all the windows are that the, that would face into the, the station area. And those are the windows that we are, that have been removed and we are replacing with newer windows. with, uh, newer windows.
Would, would that change the size of the, the HAVAC unit if, if that?
If we tear down that back piece there? Let me see, I've, I've actually got that budget. Uh, this, this goes back to a budget, early budget that we did. Uh, I think March was our last date on this one. Uh, renovation pieces for the storage area, we've got, it's, it's around eight and a half dollars a square foot, 24,000 plus or minus is what we're looking at putting into that storage area.
Okay.
So, I mean, it, it really isn't much.
All right.
Yeah. But obviously, if we end up with budget problems, that's one of the things we can go and look to see if there are pieces of that we could pull out. And I think, yeah, so, that's, that's what I have. I've got some other existing images of the building, if, if you had any questions on what condition is, uh, of the building now, or any other questions you have. And we did meet with Town of Cleveland, and they talked it through, and they saw the-
I'd like to ask Chris and Lenny to come up. Yeah, Chris and Lenny, could you guys come up?
Hey, sir.
Are you guys happy with this?
I, I am. Uh, I, I think that we've all worked together to, um, minimize costs as much as possible. The, the storage area there adds, um, an additional usefulness for the department overall. We have several pieces of equipment that would go in there, and we'd be able to keep them out of the weather, keep them protected, increase our longevity. Um, the, the one thing that I would add is the, the, for your consideration, is the parking area. What we typically try to have is one-way traffic flow. Ambulances come in one way, depart one way, and with the parking, uh, design, the way it's drawn there, there's potential for vehicles to come in or back out of a space while an ambulance is departing. There, there's potential for that, so, so that's why we asked for the, uh, additional. Other than that, uh, I think we think it's a very functional building.
Lenny, you good with it?
Yes, sir. I agree with Chief Elise. We looked at a lot of options, and we kind of toyed back and forth, and this is what we came up, we thought would work the best, including the, what he's talking about, the driving, uh, or the access. The one-way traffic's a big deal for, for us.
Thanks for your work on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other questions for, uh?
I don't have any questions, so I'd just like to say that, that, uh, I think it was very astute of the, uh, wherever it came from. I can't remember now if it was the board that came up with the idea of, of putting this, but right there on School Street, that's one of the few places that you can now enter Highway 70 and turn either east or west, and if you've tried to, to go somewhere else with that location, you're just not going to have the access, uh, that you would for emergency vehicles right there. So, I, I think it's a good move on, on everybody's part to, to, uh, to reuse that old building.
So, uh, our item says, uh, that we were going to vote on approval for the EMS, uh, station site plan, so do we want to do that? Do we want to pursue, uh, some of these alternate bids? Or do we want to approve it as?
Well, we're not approving the, uh, money.
No.
So, we're just approving the site.
Yeah.
And I'm good with the site. If they're good with it, I'm good with it.
All right. Make a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Anything else? Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Pete, thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travels. Kelly, uh, HR Director Kelly, come talk to us about, um, and also Nina, talk to us about environmental health. Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. So, we, um, had put in a request for a one-time signing bonus for some of our vacant, um, environmental health specialist positions. We're having a hard time filling, having a hard time keeping employees in that position, and, uh, we're not unique in this respect. We are competing with other counties who are experiencing a shortage of qualified individuals to fill these particular positions. Um, so, Nina, if you'd like to talk a little bit more, we're, we are receiving, um, some feedback on the length of time it's taking for us to complete some of our inspections, and we are trying to come up with a way to encourage, um, some qualified individuals to come and fill these much-needed positions for the county.
If I may, uh, I'd, you know, for, for the folks watching and for the newspaper, I, I'd like to say this has been largely consumer-driven. You know, we are receiving a lot of complaints, um, from developers and, and builders and, and, and individuals because of the backlog, and, and there's not a lot we can do about it. I mean, there's, there's only an X number of folks that are qualified to do this very technical, specific job, and this is a way to respond to the folks in the community that want faster service. So, um, I mean, we, they have struggled. They've done everything they can to hire folks. We've had folks interested, and then at the last minute, um, they decide to stay at their current, current, uh, current county. So, uh, we've looked at pay, and we think we're, 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 um, competitive in pay. We think that this may just get somebody to decide to, to come to Rowan County.
And, and I appreciate, um, the assistance of, of Aaron and Judy and Greg during this, this time. Um, the, the issue is, is we have three, in, environmental health is broken up into two divisions. You've got your food and lodging, who does restaurants, um, pools, lead, and then you have your onsite that do well inspections and, um, site evaluations, which is for septic systems. In the onsite, where we're having the issue is the onsite area where we have three full-time onsite positions. However, last year, we had, um, two employees that had been here for 30-plus years retire, and so, that leaves the county with one full-time onsite. And, you know, we're struggling with keeping up with the demand. The demand is good. Uh, we're having more subdivisions being put in that are on septic and wells, so that there's a very large demand of having site evaluations. What happens is, is when we go from three to one person, that one person is in charge of the entire county doing the site evaluations. So, our normal wait period is typically two weeks, and what happens is, as you can imagine, it goes from two, and it, it will climb. And so, we're currently about three and a half weeks, three to three and a half weeks out, um, and we have posted in several locations for the job, um, the job announcement for a, um, environmental health specialist. Where, where it gets a little bit tricky is, we do have people applying. We have about 12 applicants, but the issue is, is they're unauthorized. So, when they come in and we hire them, they literally cannot do anything for us for a period of six to eight months. So, we're already behind, so, um, we're, what we're trying to find is folks that are already authorized. So, typically, when you have that type of person that is already authorized, they, they usually ask for a higher rate of pay, or, um, you know, they're comfortable where they're at, um, so they're not looking for another job. And having a conversation with Kelly and Judy and Greg and, and Aaron, um, we have kind of come up with a, a, a part of a plan where we would, um, provide them with a signing bonus, a one-time signing bonus where, um, we pay the signing bonus upfront, but we would require them to be here for a period of one year, um, a minimum.
And, and something that, that I forgot to add to the memo, um, is, um, that the bonus is only available for those that have not worked for the county in the last-
Year.
Year. Is it, is that a good?
Sure.
I mean, we, we don't want everybody to quit tomorrow.
And, and then rehire the next year.
Yes.
Yeah. So, what we're currently, and just to add, so you, so you all know what's going on, we're currently doing independent contracting with other authorized, um, environmental health specialists from other counties. So, they're coming in and they're doing weekend and evening work for us until we can fill our positions, and we just think this bonus would be a draw.
So, when commissioners start getting calls from developers and individuals, then we, we typically, uh, jump, and so, um, I just want to give, uh, some, some strong credit to Nina and to Aaron, uh, because, you know, Nina was on the phone to me on a Saturday afternoon, and that's not typical, and so, I appreciate her reaching out to me on Saturday afternoon to discuss what some, um, solutions might be to this. And, uh, again, I just want to plug, um, our county manager, because I just don't know a better county manager, but Aaron, um, always jumps into action, and he's a problem solver, and so, these two have gone out and talked to counties all across our region and asked some of their health departments if they could spare some folks part-time. So, they have hired some folks to work, uh, after hours and on weekends, I suppose, and so, we have some folks now coming who are certified and who can work from minute one in Rowan County, and that's happening. And so, uh, just before we walked in here for a meeting, I got a call from a large developer. You don't know this, uh, but he said, "Man, I don't know what you guys did, but thank you, because I had a guy come out immediately." Uh, he did, uh, some approvals for two lots that I was looking for, so, thank you, thank you. So, that's not to us, that's to you guys. Appreciate being, appreciate you being problem solvers, uh, but this is going to happen more and more as we grow in the southern end, and so, and, um, and now we got Chewy coming to the north end, and we're expecting residential and business growth up there as well. Um, we, we are working with Nina on even a better plan. Um, we think two weeks is too much, even though that's pretty much kind of a standard, and most folks think, "Well, two weeks is fine," and, uh, w- we all have agreed that we can be better than that. So, she is putting together a plan for the commissioners to consider, uh, for us to be better, uh, than what anyone else is doing, and so, uh, we're working toward that, and again, thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, so, again, the question here for us today is, uh, with the recommendation of HR and, uh, Aaron Church, and from our health department, is to approve, uh, signing bonuses for environmental health positions. It would be up to $5,000. They'd be required to work for us for at least a year, and, uh, they would not be eligible for this unless, uh, if they have worked. What, what'd you say, Aaron? How did we put that? They, they would have to have not worked for Rowan County for at least a year, and so, I'll, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions? Considerations? Craig, anything?
I'm good.
All right. Then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item nine, budget amendments, uh, you reviewed. Uh, do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have some board appointments. If we can move through those. Uh, so, East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department, uh, Fire Commissioners, uh, William Shannon Chesney applied for a two-year term, um, and then on Enigville, uh, Volunteer Fire Department Commissioner Kevin Joines applied for reappointment, uh, so-
Chairman Ed.
Yes.
On the very first one, it says that the term will expire on June 30th of 2019, so it's already expired.
For a two-year term, that, I think that's a typo. That'd be '21, wouldn't it? Thank you.
Twenty twenty-one.
So, we'll correct that typo to 2021. Uh, do we have a motion to approve those two?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Town of Granite Quarry Planning Board, uh, rea-, they've, uh, requested for reappointment to Reverend David Trexler as an ETJ member. A motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Miller Ferry Fire Department, uh, Fire Commissioner Ricky Dale Fesperman applied for a two-year term. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Mayor Barbara Mallett applied for reappointment to three-year term. Uh, her current term expired in 2018, but she continued to serve as an active member, so we'll make this appointment retroactive to, uh, to avoid a lapse in her service. So, that would run from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021. Motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rowan Transit Advisory Board, Edward Haley has applied to fill the therapeutic recreation division seat. He is not a resident of Rowan County, but he'll be serving by virtue of his position as a therapeut-, therapeutic res-, recreational supervisor, and there's no term ending date for this seat. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Amy Smith applied to fill a vacancy for a member of the Rowan County Health Department Board, no term ending date, since she will also serve by virtue of her position with the Health Department. Motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, uh, Rowan County, we have 39 openings. Uh, we covet your involvement and, um, and leadership, so contact any of your commissioners or county clerk. Go to rowancounty.com, and, uh, you can see what openings are available, and, um, we'd love to have you. Uh, so, at this point, I don't believe we're going to adjourn, are we? Are we adjourning or recessing?
Yes. He adjourned.
We're adjourning? All right, so, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a great week.